We'll call this meeting to Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors' order for October 2nd, 2018. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layla.
Here.
Little. Maxman.
Here.
Wertz.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda?
I can't hear you, gentlemen, personally. Microphone? I can't hear you.
Okay. I said, the statement was, anybody that, from the public that wants to make any comments about anything other than what's on the agenda?
I specifically didn't see the section on the county view.
Country View?
The same. Country View is due.
It's, uh, 9B.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Moving on to years of service awards. Grant?
We have three, three years of service awards this morning. The first with twenty years of service in the Treasurers' office is Lori Stoller.
Congratulations, Lori.
Congratulations.
And then with twenty-five years of service, Lori Kohlmeyer from Country View. And with forty years of service, Beth Ben Langen from the Treasurers' office. Congratulations, Beth.
Congratulations. Thank you.
If you'd like to say anything, Beth, you can step up to the microphone.
No, thanks.
Again, I want to thank the employees for the years of service to Blackhawk County. Next is claims and payments. Approve the expenditures for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total one hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents, one seven one nine three one point zero six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layla.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, resolution to approve the expenditures for Country View Care Facility?
The expenditures that Country View will pay this week total thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighteen cents, three zero five 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 point one eight. Uh, there's a liability to the county of six hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-three cents for two months of expenditures, uh, July and August. And their bank balance is currently about six hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Susan. Any, do I have a motion or a second on this?
Move to approve?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from Department Heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Brief update on the road conditions. Uh, it seems like yesterday the rain was primarily in the, the south-central portion of the county. The Miller Creek River, or Creek Basin has experienced quite a few road closures. The Crane Creek Basin, of course, similar road closures. Our guys were running around yesterday putting barricades up. Probably be able to take most of those down this morning and then move them over to, uh, the Waps-Pendikin area. And, uh, Butler Road was going underwater just shortly before I left to come down here. So, it doesn't look like there will be much damage, but just a matter of keeping up with the road closures. So, the public can check our website. We, we do our best to keep that up to date. Uh, in other news, Elk Run Road, our home place recycling contractor, experienced a few production problems last week. That has resulted in some potholes developing on that section of Elk Run between Dunkerton Road and Donald Road. Asfor was out there this morning. We're milling up some of those bad spots and we should be patching that hopefully later today. And then weather permitting, we're trying our best to get that covered up as soon as possible. Uh, there's a lot of traffic on that road and it's continuing to deteriorate, so we're trying to get that covered up as soon as possible. And then lastly, it has now been sixty days since we sent out letters to the neighboring residents on Indian Creek Road and Gilbertville Road for that parcel, that point-two-five-acre parcel that weren't, that we would like to dispose of in that intersection. I received one phone call shortly after we sent the letters out. It was more a matter of interest rather than any type of complaint. So, we will put, place that back on the agenda on Tuesday and then it will be up to the Board of Supervisors to decide how you would like to dispose of it. Can you answer any questions?
At the cemetery location?
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other Department Heads or elected officials? Moving on to movement, minutes approved for September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close motion carried. Next is a nine oh, or, uh, we got hearings coming up at nine oh five for a seven-seven dash two twenty. Rezone request by Kelly Bush in nine oh seven hearing to rescind ordinance number seventeen to shotgun ordinance and ordinance number one twenty-nine shotguns, section number three, four, dash, two. Uh, next on the agenda is consented to end by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to the second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Wertz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is, uh, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the contract extension from Hobok Enterprises doing business as Randalls Incorporated for Deli Services at the courthouse for the term October second, two thousand and eighteen to October first, two thousand and nineteen be approved as recommended by Rory Giveng, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Morning, Rory.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giveng, Maintenance Superintendent. Um, this item is just, uh, we are exercising our, uh, one-year extension per the RFP, um, that was, uh, sent out in, uh, September, uh, two thousand and seventeen. Uh, Randalls was the only proposal that we received at that time. Uh, the contract did, stayed in there with the option to extend, uh, the term by one year. So, that's what we're asking for the Board.
So, this is the first extension?
It is.
Any further questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layla.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Pretoc Capital LLC for the convenience of the Country View Care Facility be approved. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. Just here to address you and give you an update on where we're at with this. Um, I believe as of last week, we have negotiated a final agreement. It is with them for review. We had hoped that they would, uh, have signed it and had it back to us today, um, but they are on holiday, um, uh, today. Um, they say they'll get back to us tomorrow. Um, and so, our hope is that by tomorrow, uh, we'll know and, uh, have a final agreement. And then by next week, at the latest, uh, you folks can, uh, approve it. Certainly, uh, once we have a final agreement, I'll get it to Susan, um, for you to review. And any questions that you might have, you can, can direct to me prior to that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
So, there's no action on this item?
I guess that's what we'll do there, yeah. Uh, moving on to other business. Did you have any questions you wanted to ask, sir?
I would like to know what's going to happen with the employees.
Want them to their microphone.
Benefits, severance, unemployment, what is going to be their status day one when these folks take over?
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Spore, Waterloo, Iowa, nine twenty-five Sheffield Street. Uh, I simply like to know what's going to take place on day one when they acquire the facility? If these people haven't been hired, is the county still at liability for state requirements? How does all of this facilitate itself? Are you going to be giving long-term employee severance packages? Is anything, all of this discussed where? How? What? That's what I'm asking.
Mm-hmm.
I have a daughter, so she's been there some many years and she's never once taken a vacation without phone calls the entire time, no matter where she was in the country. And so, I'm wondering how the county is going to serve all these dedicated people, approximately one-third of the county workforce, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there a response? Is there any action? Is there any conversation taking place?
There's ongoing conversation. That's what, we're waiting back to hear from Pretoc with...
With the unions? Employees of the county?
No, we're not, we're, we don't deal with, we don't deal with the union.
They will have to.
The new employ, the new employer.
Yes.
I think, to answer your question about timing, this, the purchase agreement was on for vote and obviously it's going to be delayed.
Your word, ma'am.
I said, I'm sorry. I said, the purchase agreement was on to be discussed today and voted on today. And as you heard the attorney say, that'll be delayed because they were in holiday and so we don't actually have the agreement. We'd need to take action on that agreement prior to having some of those discussions. But as soon as we do, we know there is a period of time between this and the closing that we will be discussing some of that information, as well as the company will be making some offers.
So, none of that is on the agenda for today?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, I was told it was specifically yesterday around four o'clock by the secretary that all answers the telephone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. See you next week.
For the public to understand is that we will, uh, honor the, uh, current contracts that, uh, we have with those bargaining units.
Any other questions from the public on that one? Moving on to, uh, other business. This is a resolution at the Minor Platt of survey submitted by Arnold Dela Gardell to Minor Platt, four-point-eight-five acres located at sixty-eight forty-three Waverly Road into three lots of four-point-six-nine acres zoned AR Agricultural District and one-point, point-one-six acres zoned as agricultural district. The property in question is approximately at, located at sixty-three forty-three Waverly Road, approximately two thousand feet north of Waverly Road and west of Mount Vernon Road intersection. And if approved, that the county auditor be directed to certify a copy of this after resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder.
Okay, yeah, the, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen reviewed the requests by Arnold, uh, Dela Gardell to rezone four-point-one-nine acres from AR Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District and point-five acres from RS Residential Suburban District to AR Agricultural Residential District, uh, to allow for the construction of three new single-family homes. Uh, property in question is located at six-three four-three, uh, Waverly Road, approximately a third mile, uh, north of the intersection. Um, and, uh, um, essentially, yeah, this is just a request to, to plat, uh, the, uh, the acreage, uh, from, for the, uh, the rezone area. Um, the, uh, the property was previously zoned residential suburban AR Agricultural District since the adoption of the ordinance. Um, the, uh, Minor Platt was unanimously, uh, approved, um, by the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, in addition previously to the rezone request.
Motion to approve?
A second.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Maxman.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, 10B is resolution, Director County, or Board of Supervisors to approve the, ensigning application for a special permit request by Iowa Regional Utilities Associated Construction, construct a twelve-foot, six-inch by twenty-five-foot, six-inch building generator and water booster pump station located east of eighteen eighteen East Cirof G Road as recommended by Seth Hyberg. All yours, Seth.
Okay, yeah, Planning and Zoning Commission, that's regular meeting on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, reviewed the request submitted by, uh, Todd Rosendale on behalf of Iowa Regional Utilities, uh, to construct a, uh, twelve-by-six-inch-by-twenty-five-feet-by-six-inch building generator and booster pump station in the agricultural district. Um, a, uh, it, um, it was moved by Wertz and seconded by Fezemeyer to, uh, approve the request to, uh, construct the, uh, the structure, building and, uh, pump station. Motion to approve, uh, carried unanimously. Uh, the applicant submitted a request, uh, to permit for the construction of the, uh, generator and booster pump station. A partial is large enough to accommodate a building generator and water booster pump station, and the lots meet the minimum lot and size requirements for the AR Agricultural District by green greater than one-point-five acres in size and wider than a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the immediate surrounding areas primarily agricultural with rural homes. Uh, the Blackhawk County Future Land Use Map, a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan designates the, the surrounding area, um, as, uh, agricultural as well. Uh, the area where the special permit is being requested is not in a special flood hazard area. Uh, the property does have a lease score of two fifty-seven out of three hundred, which is considered high agricultural value site. A zoning ordinance notes that land that is classified as having high agricultural value should be strongly discouraged for development in almost every case. Also states that in general, these sites are reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban land use encroachment. Um, however, the ordinance also states that only under very unique circumstances are these sites to be developed and only after compelling evidence is provided. Uh, the zoning ordinance does list several criteria that could be considered unique and compelling evidence, and they are as follows. Area's not been an active, uh, row crop production for the previous fifteen years. Area's not conducive to the production by reason of parcel shape and size. Area's compatible with surrounding land uses, meeting any one of these criteria, should not constitute approval as each request reviewed and evaluated based on their individual circumstances. The site is prime farmland, but it should be noted that the building generator and booster pump station is a critical piece of infrastructure to provide adequate water and water pressure to rural Blackhawk County. And the, uh, eighty-five-by-eighty-foot permanent easement will only be taken seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five square feet out of production on a parcel that is thirty-three point zero nine acres. Uh, disposed press located within the Blackhawk County, uh, Waterloo Airport and, uh, height overlay review area, therefore, all conditions are met.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Move to the second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Wertz.
Yes.
Layla.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is C, uh, discussion possible board action, County Social Services open position. Morning, Mr. Lincoln.
Good morning. Bob Lincoln, CEO for County Social Services. Uh, I thought I might take this opportunity, before I get to the request, to give you an update on what's been happening with County Social Services. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
The issue that's probably gotten the most attention is, uh, our financial, uh, situation. Uh, January of this year, uh, we found ourselves, uh, running over, uh, budget, uh, for the FY, uh, two thousand and eighteen year. Uh, we finished the year almost two, two-point-four million dollars over, uh, over budget. Uh, the drivers for that, uh, in a nutshell, uh, was the impact of privatization of, uh, of Medicaid. We had a three-million-dollar, uh, contract for, uh, targeted case management with AmeriHealth Caritas. Uh, when they left the state abruptly, uh, in the fall of two thousand, uh, sixteen, uh, we were faced with, uh, providing, uh, that continuity of care, uh, to our individuals at the cost of our, uh, of our dollars, if you will. We also launched our assertive community treatment team here in Waterloo, uh, that we're very pleased with and, and, uh, we think it's really adding the community capacity that we've needed for some time. But again, due to the, uh, contracting, uh, complications, if you will, uh, that implementation was almost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, over budget. In other words, we paid for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had planned for Medicaid, uh, to certify and reimburse, uh, but that didn't happen because of the hoops that we had to jump over. Faced with, uh, with a twenty-two-million-dollar, um, uh, budget for FY eighteen, uh, and completing our reorganization that we called the pivot, uh, January first of, of two thousand and eighteen, uh, within, uh, the last seven or eight months, um, our quadrant coordinators have very effectively, uh, moved folks, uh, off of our support onto their Medicaid coverage. And, uh, what I handed out to you is a concise monthly summary that we provide to our CSS directors that gives us our, uh, cash expenditure. And what you'll see in the current month, and this is a report, uh, for August, uh, we had expenditures of one, uh, point, uh, one, one million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then, the claims that we paid in September were one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, on this sheet, you actually have the first three months or the first quarter of our year, and if you, uh, take that out for the year, uh, we're on budget to be close to sixteen point five million dollars. So, that's a reduction of, uh, of nearly six million dollars, uh, from our, uh, budget of last year. Again, uh, that was done with very little reduction in services. It was moving people out of residential facilities into Medicaid-supported homes, uh, Medicaid-supported services. It was completing the, uh, the contract with the assertive community treatment team with RHD and getting those, uh, services reimbursed. So, we are now, uh, uh, our expenditures are now in line, uh, with the revenue, uh, the levy that we are collecting. Our cash balance as of, uh, nine twenty-five was two-point-five million dollars. The House File five oh four has required that all of the MHD regions get their fund balances down to, uh, twenty percent. This puts us about, uh, uh, we'd probably be on accrual basis close to, uh, thirty percent. So, again, we were one of the first regions to get, uh, get our, uh, reserves, uh, spent down in line with the intent of our, our legislators. Uh, we think this will, uh, these expenditures will continue to tighten. We're, we had a meeting with the, um, Adult Crisis Stabilization Center that we started back in two thousand and twelve, and they are now on track to be Medicaid-eligible. Um, we hope no later than November first. Uh, we spent about one to one-point-two million dollars, uh, for that service. When that's approved for Medicaid, we hope that that will free up another, uh, half million dollars. Uh, and so, what that will do is, again, give us more discretionary dollars to then reinvest in those gaps that we find in our, our service system, or if it's pleasure of the Board, uh, reduce our, our levy asking. That said, do you have any questions on, in other words, the financial crisis that was quite, uh, pressing in January, uh, we believe is, is over? And we're in good, good, solid, uh, financial position.
Do you fear that the, the legislature's actions requiring you to lower your, your reserves, um, combined with the Governor's actions for, uh, for the privatization, um, that without having those reserves to deal with these unexpected costs, uh, we might be in, uh, a more vulnerable position in the future?
Uh, yeah, that's a great question. I think the reserves did serve us well in this, uh, very turbulent time, uh, through that transition. So, uh, I, I am glad that we had the reserves and we were able to soften and, and, uh, bridge folks to, uh, the new, new program. So, absolu, absolutely. Long-term, um, it's just, i- it's always a source of contention between the state legislator and counties in terms of how much money you should be, uh, sitting on. Uh, as a system, the regions, uh, as of last year, had nearly a hundred and thirty-six million dollars. Um, and so, at the end of the day, that's a political question. How much, uh, money should be parked in the public coffers to, to, to serve the, the need? What, what I'm concerned about now is what some of the regions still sit on very significant balances. Some still have twenty, uh, even maybe, maybe more than twenty million dollars. They're, they're going to have to, uh, spend that money, and what's going to happen is they're going to lower their levy, and in some cases, they're not going to levy at all because they're going to use, uh, use those reserve dollars. And then, when those dollars are gone, and then the levy has to be increased, um, that's going to be hard to restore that capacity in some of those, uh, those, those regions. But, the, going forward in terms of the, uh, House File twenty-four fifty-six, that mandates, uh, new infrastructure, mental health infrastructure for the state by two thousand and twenty-one, because we've made those investments, uh, we're ready to go and we think we will be, uh, easily in compliance, uh, with the investments that we've made for complex care, uh, which is our I-Start team, uh, our, uh, we think the Adult Crisis Stabilization Center, they're doing amazing work out there. We hope to have them positioned for a soft open for access center by February first. And that access center is, is envisioned by the state to be available throughout the state within a reasonable drive by law enforcement, uh, to divert folks from the justice system into the, uh, mental health system. Again, we've been, and I say we, uh, they, the Adult Crisis Stabilization Center has been working closely with law enforcement and our hospitals for several years, and I think they have the skill set, they have the capacity, uh, they have the prescriber with Amber Lassina, uh, to do that job well. So, again, I think it'll be an opportunity for County Social Services to lead and show how, uh, how that can impact the lives of folks.
Thank you.
That's a long answer.
Yes, Mr. Lincoln, that, um, we've squeezed the dollars down, uh, to comply with state requirements, but are we looking to the future of what the actual mental health needs are in the Maltoit County area that we serve? Um, and I think, looking at what the needs are for those under the age of eighteen in the future, uh, there are certainly lacking services for, for, um, mental health care for the juvenile population. Um, how are we going to be able to address in the future, uh, to be proactive and to provide a service that is meaningful and, at the end of the day, will reduce everyone's cost of mental illness if we are proactive? But if we continue to reduce the amount of money that we put into this system, uh, we will not be, my opinion, in a position to be proactive and meets the needs of adult and children's mental health.
It's a fantastic question. Um, I, I really do believe, I, I'm very optimistic about, um, the way the adult system is, is shaping up. Why we've left children behind in all this work is, 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 uh, is a, is a mystery to me. Uh, I did sit on the children's work group for a couple of years and got a little, little discouraged and, and took myself off. Uh, County Social Services did do a pilot, um, up in our North Quadrant with YSS, where we essentially just provided some wraparound, uh, services. And, uh, we had a, an amazing impact for small group of, of complex children that, uh, really benefited from what we were able to do and the system wasn't. When you look at the children's service system, you, you see that the juvenile, uh, courts and protective services are driving the system, but families that want to voluntarily, uh, access the system are, are really being challenged. Uh, and, um, my opinion might be unique in this, that I think there's a lot of services and resources for children, but we've... for children, but we've made it so complex and the funding driven more by the courts and corrections than by the medical system that it wouldn't be a big thing to fix. I don't think it's a big dollar thing. And I think the mental health and disability services regions should step in. I think that will be an option that our CSS board will have this fall, is do we want to, again, lead in providing at least some initial flexible funding for children to get them connected sooner rather than later to services? The work group has been reconstituted at the state. They're coming up with a concrete plan. The department is having very specific conversations with the regions, are you and will you be the infrastructure for children? I'm hoping that that answer is yes.
I know that the years I've been on the detention board, that we see those that are placed in detention, there's a high percentage of those that are under mental health medications, and perhaps there would be a better way to deal with those individuals other than just through medications.
Uh huh.
And I know from some personal experience that there are kids that are in daycare settings that have difficulties, and they're not part of the judicial system. So it's not just the judicial system that's addressing needs of children that have mental health issues and finding a way to do that without sending them out of the state of Iowa.
Absolutely. We are meeting Thursday afternoon in Waukun. We had a young lady sitting in the emergency room for over a week because there was no service that was available to meet her needs. So I think that's what we just need to start doing, is start mobilizing our resources around those issues when it's not working and what is it going to take to fix it.
I guess it's, I don't see it a benefit to continue to cut funding for mental health when there appears to be a growing need for addressing mental health.
Well, as an administrator, that's music to my ears. There's always more we can do if we have the resources, absolutely. I appreciate that. Appreciate your leadership and supervisors' wide, constant leadership and support on the CSS board. Doing a lot of good work.
I think, just one final question, just the thing about if, oftentimes, the conversation around mental health just surrounds around crisis situations. I think that's because that's what we're still trying to get our heads around. But it's pretty evident that we just have a general mental health crisis in this country. I think probably depression and loneliness and such things are at really probably an all-time high.
Uh huh.
And there's a number of factors related to that. I mean, do you think that if given, if given the resources that County Social Services, could somebody be in a position to, you know, work on solutions to add more providers in communities and those things that actually get at things well before that they're a crisis situation?
Uh huh. Boy, that's a classic question. Again, if you're always focused on the crisis, you're not getting at the source of the crisis. So how do you work, you know, how do you work upstream to see where the problem is originating? If you look at the flyer I handed out, I really tried to sift that down. As complex as our system is, the three sections I put in that flyer, one talks about our quadrant coordinators, our quadrant team. Sarah Jansen serves this quadrant, by the way, and does an amazing job with her team. And then she has, was it eight? What is the number on her team? I can't think. But she has, she's...
Five.
Five, five. Oh, she needs eight. She's got five. But she's got registered nurses, she's got social workers, and they serve a four-county area and use their interdisciplinary support, interdisciplinary interventions to provide what we call those secondary supports, if you will, that assistance that help people stay in the community with a little service, with a little rent help, with some intervention, with our social work. The middle section talks about that crisis piece. When that falls apart, how do we triage and how do we do that third level, that tertiary level, to get people safe and then get them back home? What you're referencing is that last section, that primary support. How do we get enough capacity? How do we get enough public education out there so that people identify that they're struggling with a mental illness and have a way forward to get that treated so that it doesn't become more, doesn't become an eventual crisis? Again, our work, our Mental Health Center, Black Hawk Grande, does an amazing job of doing everything they can to expand capacity. We have supported the expansion of telepsychiatry. We have telepsychiatry in most of our jails. We have telepsychiatry now in our rural access hospitals. That looks like the best way forward to increase our capacity, given the challenges of recruiting psychiatric care and the provider shortage that we have. What Integrated Telehealth Partners tells us out of Des Moines, and this is an agency we helped launch, what, five years ago? And they're doing very well, proud to say. But every week, he says he's got providers that are anxious to provide services in Iowa because they're usually doing it from a beach in Florida somewhere. But it's very exciting that he can now start piping in some of that specialty care, child psychiatry, forensic psychiatry that we haven't had before. So we hope from a system standpoint, the insurers and Medicaid will make that more available because we see that as a real trend in healthcare, that more and more folks are accessing their primary healthcare online, getting the initial assessment, maybe getting a prescription, maybe getting that first evaluation to know what their options are.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. I could obviously talk all day, but I appreciate those very thoughtful questions. So the reason I'm here today is to ask for your support, kind of outside the boundaries, if you will, of Black Hawk County. We've had some real success with our iStart program, which is a national program on the University of New Hampshire. It's a specialized mental health intervention for folks with intellectual disability. It's really how we're trying to respond and meet the needs of a very small population with very complex needs. And other regions have seen our success, and they've wanted us to expand the service into their region. So we have a coordinator now in the cross region in southern Iowa, in one in Rolling Hills region. We're needing to replace our coordinator in the cross region, and we're coming to you today to see if you would be willing to be the employer of record, at least in the short term, for this position. County Social Services has started looking at what it would take to become our own employer of record. We think going forward, that will hopefully resolve some of the challenges we've had. Right now, all of our staff within County Social Services are employees of one of our member counties. And I know there's a little discomfort when we're asking you to be employer of record of somebody that will be actually living and working in southern Iowa. But I'm hoping within a year, we'll have an alternative and we can move that individual out of your employment. You know what I'm asking you?
For sure. I was going to say, so has the CSS board supported the, I guess, the position of being your own employer? Has that been voted on? Is that...
That's a great question. They have not formally made that decision yet. They've made a commitment to investigate it. So they formed a HR committee at their last meeting, and we retained Paul Groof, an HR consultant, that will be helping us develop that option. We want to engage, obviously, it's going to impact our current staff most, and we want to make sure we're engaging them and get their input, you know, aligning, taking, you know, 20 different health plans, 20 different benefit packages, and trying to do something that holds our employees harmless, or as Paul has so well coined it, to try to become the employer of choice, that not making our employees move to this new employer of record, but creating a package that's attractive to our team. So no, is the answer. You lost it.
But there are other examples of organizations that county support that have their own employee system.
Yeah. And again, this is a conversation that's been taking place amongst the regions, and it was kind of interesting, Paul Groof reached out to some of the other regions to see where they were on this issue, and he said a couple of them said, oh, we're waiting for CSS to do it. So for whatever reason, we tend to be the ones that step out.
I guess I'd ask for input from Deb Bunger, our HR representative.
Mark Gurd, Deb Bunger, HR Director. Well, when Karen reached out to me with this question, I had asked her a few questions back. Basically, this person does live in southern Iowa. They aren't serving Black Hawk County at all. I asked her if Black Hawk County said no, you know, what would be their option? She thought that they might ask other counties. For us to be the employer of record is a little difficult for somebody who's that far away. I'm not really sure how that'll work. I do know that if we're the employer of record, though, we are responsible for all the legalities, you know, from getting their I-9s to getting them to new higher orientation, providing insurance, which I understand they'll reimburse us for everything other than the medical, actual medical claims. So that would be on Black Hawk County. Work comp, unemployment, all of that would be our responsibility. And so I just basically said, that's really above my ability to make that decision. That's why I deferred to you. I said, you really need to bring that to the board. And if they do become their own employer at some point, then for us, I guess we would probably have to lay that person off, and then they would move to that. That would probably be if they chose to. But again, this is in the southern part of Iowa, pretty much down by the border, correct? And I don't know if you do have any other counties who could step up and do it besides Black Hawk. That might be closer.
So, and maybe, I'm sorry, Bob, you probably explained this, but as far as what this position actually does, what does it do for our region or for...
Yeah. So again, where people work is, you know, we're, this partnership is something we're trying to get comfortable with. Obviously, Karen Dowell, who is employed by Black Hawk County, is the chief operating officer, and so she works throughout the other 22 counties. One of the main reasons we're asking for Black Hawk to consider this is our clinical director, Felicia Bates, is also, lives in Black Hawk County and will be the direct supervisor for this position. So then that gives her that, again, that resource with your HR and that understanding of the benefit package. So that's, you know, another one of the drivers. This position is the community agent, if you will, for the iStart team that's then supported by a clinical team, which would be, Felicia Bates would be the clinical director. We have Dr. Jesse, a psychologist that we contract with out of One Vision in Clear Lake that provides psychological support. We have Amber Lassina, which is the medical director for iStart and provides the clinical review. The other exciting thing about this, about iStart, is we've had interest expressed by the East Central Region in Cedar Rapids. And so if they go all in on iStart, we'll be expanding iStart by another, probably four or five coordinators and be increasing our capacity. What this does for Black Hawk County and CSS is by selling the program to the cross region, they pay all the cost of this coordinator, plus then they pay a proportional cost of our medical and administrative team. So it has saved by selling these contracts to Rolling Hills and the cross region, we've saved, don't let me overstate it, Karen, about $200,000, $220,000 in overhead costs that they're sharing with our involvement. So again, that's the power of doing things together, but, you know, now we're going beyond our 22 members, and now we're working with other regions. We're also going to have more of that, too, as we move forward with 2456, is how do we, the state infrastructure that's envisioned by 2456 will have to be done jointly with the region. So again, it's been a very positive experience working with the cross region, and they're very appreciative that we've made the investment in building this program and building this capacity to meet needs that they were struggling with before. Again, I don't know if I answered the question.
You did.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bob?
You may, I assume you came to Black Hawk County for a reason. I was going to say, too, when they're...
Because I love Black Hawk County, that's why. And again, you've got a great HR, our department, and again, it is a, you know, it's a, it would be a, and we, in terms of the budget, too, we do have, we would not have to amend our Black Hawk operating budget to absorb this position. So we have the dollars available to hire the coordinator.
And you mentioned an estimation, obviously, of how long the temporary position would be in place, would be about a year, you're thinking?
Yeah, well, I'm thinking that the committee has started work. We've actually...
Have we sent in our IFRS application yet?
No, we're working on our IFRS application. I think, again, the main, the thing that will take the most time is getting folks engaged in the process and getting them up to speed and getting them to support this transition. I would think July 1st would be a target, but I don't want to make that too firm. Time goes fast and things take longer than you think, so.
Have you started negotiations on insurance as well? No. IFRS is the first thing you kind of...
Yeah. IFRS, we think, we've had, made a few inquiries. It's kind of interesting, when we go back to 2009, which, by the way, County Social Services is coming up on their 10-year anniversary amidst all this. January 1st of 2009, we started County Social Services with our five counties. When we had this conversation, Karen was digging in the files and she, we had filled out the application for IFRS back in '09, but didn't pursue it at that time. So there's no, there doesn't appear to be any question that we would be IFRS-eligible. And that, of course, is the biggest concern of our staff. Then the next most complicated piece is the healthcare. And either can we join ISAC? Can we join another county? Can we join NEI-III-A? Can we form our own pool? Those are things I have no knowledge of right now, but hopefully Paul will be able to get us through that.
What is the title of this position, again?
It's iStart Coordinator.
And you're asking Black Hawk County, due to the chain of command, basically, of the staff?
Yes. Yes. And again, to the, Debbie's correct, there probably are some costs that don't get allocated that we don't reimburse, but anything that we can identify is certainly reimbursable. And so again, to the extent we can possibly, it should be cost neutral.
Sorry, I have one more, just a little thing I wanted to discuss, really a little thing. But as far as, we did have a situation a while back where somebody you guys are hiring, what you thought was going to be another quadrant, and they ended up being in Black Hawk County, while the job had already been, the description had been out, the salary had been out, had been offered and accepted, and then they wanted it to be Black Hawk County, and from then, then they wanted us to go through our process, which we can't do. We can't do it backwards. Once a job offer's been made, it is what it is. So from that, we kind of had some discussions with a couple of the board members. We decided that since County Social Services has their own board and the 28E agreement does state that their... does state that they're responsible for hiring and setting salaries, that they would basically have that responsibility to determine that. So I guess I'm not entirely sure how the recruitment is going to work for this particular one, particularly since it's not even in our region, so that does concern just a little bit.
Well, we'd certainly wanna be in compliance with your policies, but then obviously the recruitment is gonna be local, and we're working on finding that right person. It's a very, very unique position, and so we're...
So you were looking at our HR department, really, to help with the recruitment and the advertising and everything for the department?
Karen, I'm trying to speak to, I think you guys have just sent out your own advertisements more.
We have. We send it out to all our counties normally. This one, obviously, will be targeted toward the counties in and around the cross-region, since it's like the Pella and south from there area, so.
Do we have any similar ones like this, Susan? Or Debbie?
Debbie would have.
Anything similar to this type of position or something we've done previously?
So we have this position in Blackhawk County, don't we?
And that's the only one?
And that's the other plus. We do have, I mean, the job description, we do have a job description that's been vetted and priced, and so that's usually a huge...
And initially, all the positions that were in Blackhawk County, we had scored through our point factor system, but when we made this last decision, I think you guys kinda did your market study, you took into account what we had done, and then you, your board came up with the salaries. So you're kind of going off-market more than trying to level it out between counties, because every region is a little different.
That's right.
I guess I have a question for Mr. Burke. I don't know, you've had, probably haven't had much opportunity to really look at this. Do you see undue liability being placed on Blackhawk County by being the county of employment?
I don't see undue liability. I do see some liability, because that would, this would be an employee, just like every other Blackhawk County employee, but I don't see undue liability. There may be some issues with administration, because the employee is so far away from your human resources office, but I don't see major legal problems with this.
Thank you.
If, for some reason, CSS Board would not support, or something would happen that you wouldn't become your own employer, how would you see that impacting this position? Or would you, would it just be a longer term you'd be looking at for Blackhawk County to remain the employer?
I guess I have to say yes, but I'm, I think my vision for iStart, nationally, the start model out of the University of New Hampshire is typically brought to states in a statewide platform. We were the only state to bring it in regionally and then try to push it out statewide. So I think, even if we don't create a employer of record for the whole of CSS, I think we have to do this, at least for the iStart program, to keep it growing, especially East Central Region, a catchment of over 500,000 is indicated an interest in having this program. We just have to figure out a way to deliver that. And of course, that wouldn't be reasonable at all to make those new coordinators Blackhawk County employees.
If the Board would support this, would you reevaluate this after a year?
You bet, absolutely.
So your timeline for hiring, too, would probably be soon, relatively soon, you'd like to start that process?
Yeah, yeah, we've been given a two-week notice. So again, we do have this position in place, and frankly, she's been doing an amazing job, and we just really hate to lose her, but we don't wanna leave that position open very long either, because we were just getting that program going down there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I'm willing to make a motion on this today. I mean, I guess I see that their expansion of services has, into other regions, has been a revenue generator for our region, and it's also just the right thing, or a good thing to do for, is the general mental health capacity in this state. So I guess I'd make a motion that Blackhawk County be the employer of record for this iStart coordinator based in Pella. Is that correct?
It's not, I don't think it's in Pella.
Okay.
Marion County is one of the counties, and then they moved south. Decatur County, I think, is where it's based.
Okay.
So it'd be in a region?
Cross-region.
Cross-region.
Okay. So I guess the motion would be that Blackhawk County be the employer of record for this iStart coordinator in the cross-region?
I would second that with the addition that it be reevaluated at the end of one year.
I take that as a friendly amendment.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Thank you, Bob.
Next is a 905 hearing, it is now 9:56.
Hearing on a proposed ordinance number 77-220, Bush Rezone, motion received, receive and place on file proof of publication and notice of public hearing. Move to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion, way the first reading app's notice was published September 21st, 2018, on this Kately Bush Rock Road, rezone of 3.2, 3.332 acres.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral or written comments are received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
It's all yours, Seth.
Okay, yeah, yeah, this is basically just request to reason on 3.32 acres from A Agricultural District to CM Commercial Manufacturing District in order to allow for commercial dog kennel and outdoor weddings arboretum. It was moved by Ann Chan and seconded, excuse me, and seconded by Sage to approve the request reason of 3.32 acres from agricultural to commercial manufacturing order to allow for kennel operation and outdoor weddings at the site with the following conditions, that the property is only limited to uses of an outdoor kennel and wedding and commercial kennel, and the number of dogs that can be kennelled is limited 25, and that the neighbors have an agreement in place regarding their future operations, and motion to approve carried unanimously. It took a while to get the agreement put in place, but it was, it's been finally signed, and so that kinda caused the delay for this particular business item. Yeah, the project site is just located in 1902 East Rock. Property's been zone A Agricultural, since the adoption of zoning ordinance, all surrounding properties are zone agricultural. Future land use map doesn't get necessary is agricultural, including surrounding properties. There is no land located in a special flood hazard area. Property main parcel has a lease score of 261 out of 300, which is considered a high agricultural value site. High agricultural value should be strongly discouraged for development uses in almost every case. Also states in general, these sites reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban land use encroachment. However, the ordinance also states that under very unique circumstances are these sites to develop only after compelling evidence is provided, there are only horses and law sever criteria that could be considered unique and compelling evidence, and there is follows. Area's not been an active rook crap production or conservation reserve program for the previous 15 years. Area's not conducive to production by reason of parcel size or shape. Areas compatible surrounding uses, reason of similar adjacent uses, meaning any one of these criteria should not constitute approval. However, each request will be reviewed and evaluated based on its own individual circumstances. Should be noted, the applicant has not farmed the land for three years, and nine mill trees have been planted where the farm ground once stood for the outdoor wedding area known as Willow Wedding Gardens on the eastern edge of the property. The site also contains a home and accessory structures that are already being used for the kennel operation, so, you know, nothing new is being constructed. These are all existing buildings, and just basically just trying to bring the operation into compliance, as well as the outdoor weddings as well. The applicant has had commercial kennel operation known as Paw prints with 22 dogs at the property for four years without any neighbor complaints. Prior to the applicant has had Paw prints and Hudson for 12 years, and is a certified kennel with the Iowa Department of Agricultural. In addition, they've held previous four outdoor weddings in the past. The site is cleared, broken down after each wedding. Maximum attendance approximately 200 persons, and they have 34 parking spaces, which is more than adequate for the zoning ordinance, and the applicant has noted a, you know, and they have noted a parking area on the site plan that was also included in the application, and that's a staff report.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Seth, was there any concern by law enforcement for this facility?
None that I'm aware of, none that I'm aware of. And we have not received any complaints from the public at all, either in regards to this request, so.
Graham, were there any...
Yes, sir.
There's no breeding of animal, of dogs, so this is just the boarding of animals?
Oh, yeah, it's just boarding. That's it, and the...
And grooming.
And grooming. The applicant is here to, yeah.
No breeding, that's...
Yeah.
Any further questions? Motion is second on the floor to close the hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend rules requiring the Board of Supervisors consider and vote on a proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Maxman?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an ordinance adopts and that the ordinance amending. Ordinance number 36 is amended by the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by a subsection number 220 to section 6B. Rezoning certain property is described in the above requests amended by Kelly Bush and to consider the same for adoption and adopt would be known as ordinance number 77-220.
So moved. Second.
Move to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Swart?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is 907 hearing, and it is now 10:03. To rescind ordinance number 17, the shotgun ordinance, and ordinance number 129, shotgun section number 3-4-2. Motion received and placed on file proof of publication.
So moved.
Move to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received.
So moved.
Any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Second.
Hold it, go ahead, Tony.
Morning Board, so, I've given a pretty strong background on what this really entails. Back in 85, when the Board first implemented this ordinance, we didn't have, number one, clear definition of the technology of electronic control devices. There weren't many out there. Now we have basically two. We have a taser-type device that fires projectile, and now the Supreme Court has identified that that is still considered a dangerous weapon. We have the other type that you actually physically touch people with, and this July, the Iowa State Legislature passed a law that indicates that you are no longer required to have a permit to be able to carry those stun gun devices. And so our ordinance is actually in direct violation now of that law as it changed, and anyone that wants to carry something that shoots a projectile, obviously has the recourse to carry, permit to carry, and obtain a permit to carry to be able to do that with a dangerous weapon. So our ordinance is somewhat null and void anymore, so that's why I brought it to your attention.
Thank you, Tony. Anything else?
I would just say, Brian Williams, Blackhawk County Attorney, we had relied, years ago, we had relied on this ordinance, because we didn't know whether these devices were actually what we call per se dangerous weapons. The Iowa Supreme Court eventually told us they were, but with this amendment, what it does is, the carrying weapons section has the prohibitions, it's pretty limited, and then it has a laundry list of exceptions to things that aren't carrying weapons, and this now is included as something that is not. So long as you're 18 and you're not using it in a public offense, it's not carrying weapons. So as Sheriff Thompson indicated, the ordinance has no force in effect anymore, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, so this covered just the kind, just the ones without the projectile?
The projectiles will still be prohibited.
So the public knows they still need a permit to carry?
Yes.
One of those?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a motion as second on the floor to close the hearing after oral written comments are received. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend rules requiring the Board of Supervisors consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an ordinance rescinded, rescinded that the ordinance number 17 to Blackhawk County Iowa shotgun ordinance adopted September 3rd, 1985, and ordinance number 129 to Blackhawk County Iowa shotguns, section number 3-4-2 be rescinded.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Maxman?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is any reports or information from the Board. I'd just like to thank everybody that showed up this weekend for the 45-hour vigil. A lot of things come, we had a 45-hour vigil again this year. It's been going on for many years, as anybody that's seen the careers knows what it's about, is remembering the 45 from Blackhawk County. We've kind of got some unique situations with the 45 that were, well, two of them are missing in action, but 45 soldiers from Blackhawk County were killed during the Vietnam conflict. Forty-three of them were killed in action. One was a Congressional Medal of Honor winner. I don't think too many counties can say that. Two of them are still missing in action, and the missing in action, one of the missing in action, Mr. Whitford, Colonel Whitford, was shot down November 2nd, 19, 19, I'll get this straight, 69. I was 20, I, that was on my 21st birthday, and I come home, and a short time after being home, they started to sell him bracelets, the POW bracelets, at the local vets' clubs, and the, Mr. Merzlock was selling them at the time, and he asked me if I wanted one. I said, "Yeah," and I bought one, and I just reached in the bag and pulled one out, put it on my wrist, didn't pay any attention to it for a few weeks, and then I noticed who it was. Then come to find out, Mr. Whitford's dad was a coach at UNI, and it brought a lot of things to fruition for me. But during those 45 hours, you know, we're talking about mental health, we had several people, street people come up, and we had food available, so they come up and had a lot of visits with some of the people with mental health issues in this community that, you know, are living under the bridges or aren't living in substantial places. And the other thing that come up that Mr. Maxman were talking about was the situation with Cedar Rapids. They have a home down there for the homeless that had to close last Friday because of lack of funds. It's a poor damn time to be closing a place, you know, when it's going into this type of season, especially seeing these people and their needs and listening to their story. The one kid turned 58 Saturday down there, and sitting, talking with him, and he's got some issues with mental health. But next year, we're gonna expand the, hopefully with the help of Mr. Maxman, because I know he's always willing to help on things, a small healing field thing, include Afghanistan vets, Iraqi vets that have been killed from the area, so we'll add more of a healing process for the community, so. And it's, it'll be the first full weekend in September, I think it's the sixth, seventh, and eighth of next year, so anybody's welcome to attend. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Somebody else has got something they wanna add.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion...